Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to Millbrae City Council meeting. This is our regular meeting. We've just come back from our special meeting for September 26, 2023. And City Clerk, do we need to do roll call?
Councilmember Pappan? Councilwoman Cahalan?
Here.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
All members of the City Council are present.
I'm going to apologize in advance. I'm kind of losing my voice today, so I may cut in and out. It is not sound. It is my voice. If everyone can please, everyone who can stand, please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
...............
Thank you. As I said, we had interviews with Park and Rec candidates. We'll be bringing that item up shortly. And then we have closed session tonight. So if we have a lot of public comment, we will be going for a shorter public comment period because it's going to be a long night. So starting with that, we're going to begin with ceremonial presentations. And starting us off is a proclamation proclaiming the month of September as National Preparedness Month. And Vice Mayor Goodman is going to read the proclamation. And we have Central County Fire Department. We have our Deputy Fire Marshal Patty Coke here to accept. And CERT volunteer Chris Gardini coming.
All right. September 2023 as National Preparedness Month. Whereas, National Preparedness Month is an observation each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing your homes, businesses, and communities for disasters and emergencies. And whereas, the 2023 theme is preparing for older adult. Older adults are disproportionately impacted by hazardous events and face even greater risk, especially for those who are low income, disabled, or live in rural areas. And whereas, during National Preparedness Month, we also recognize the bravery and the sacrifices of our first responders and emergency volunteers who are out on the first line, first line of defense in so many crises. And whereas, community members are encouraged to take time to prepare your families and those in your care to ensure everyone is prepared for disasters and emergencies in our type, in any type. And whereas, outreach in the workplace, schools, and volunteer organizations can allow people to feel more prepared during the event of actual emergencies and disasters. And whereas, those who prepare for emergencies can recover faster and help others who also may be affected, demonstrating community resilience in the face of adversity. Now therefore, we, the Millbrae, or the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 23 as National Preparedness Month.
Thank you for recognizing National Preparedness Month. It's my honor to introduce Chris Gardini. He represents Millbrae-Land and CERT programs as one of the very first recruits for the 2007 Land Radionet program that preceded our CERT program. Thank you, Chris.
I just want to thank all our volunteers that helped out. We have, I think we trained over a couple hundred people, and we have about 30 people that show up to all of our events. And they put in quite a few hours this year, so I just want to thank them for all their help.
I would like to say thank you. Do you both want to talk about the CERT class coming up in January?
Yeah, the CERT class, we have a CERT class coming up.
Chris, come a little bit closer to the mic.
We have a CERT class coming up on the 17th of January. It should be on a website. It runs for seven nights, seven Wednesday nights, and then we have a Skills Day at the fire station on a Saturday. So it's a good time to, you know, hone up your skills for, we do a triage and we do, and trivia and all kinds of different skills for, and some fire, putting out small fires and stuff. So it's a good course.
And I know one of the lessons we learned from COVID, because COVID attacked older people, and a lot of our CERT volunteers are older, that we need more young people. What is the age group? Because I know we've been talking about maybe putting Millbrae Leo's Club through the program.
Yeah. Right now it's 18, but if they're younger than that, we do, we can't take them in yet.
And I brought this, where a lot of us, in fact, all five of us just came back from the Cal Cities Conference. This was something I think CERT should get. It actually can break a car window if you're stuck in it. So City Manager, usually in our old days with CERT, you perform, you participate in a number of programs, and you grow your CERT kit on that. So this is just something that they gave me from one of the disaster prep booths that is just really cool on that. Yeah. Flashlight, army knife. But I don't have one of these in my car or in my CERT kit. Just something to think about for National Disaster Month. Thank you. And would we all like to have a photo? Council, would you like a photo?
Can I, just one little thing? Just also, as we think about our CERT representatives, really ensuring that we have folks throughout the city and in all of our neighborhoods. And I'm excited we're talking about this now in September, so we have a lot of time between now and January to really get the word out and do outreach. So if everyone here tonight can help spread that word and get us a really full class for the program. Thank you.
I would point out that both Councilwoman Pappan and I are CERT members, and the Vice Mayor is on the, what is the title of the Bay Area Red Cross Board of Directors? It's Bay Area. It's not Golden Gate anymore. Well, they changed their name. So we're pretty well there, but strongly encourage Millbrae people, sign up for the CERT class in January. It's fantastic class. And you know what you get to do at the end? You get to put out a fire. So you finally get to learn how to use the fire extinguisher that most of us should have in our kitchen and in our garage, but you get to actually use it to put out a real fire. And it's, it's just a really terrific program. So I encourage that, and I thank all of our CERT members for that, and our fire department. All right. Moving on, next up is proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And Councilman Fung?
The City of Millbrae proclamation. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer death in men. And whereas, one in eight men have a lifetime probability of developing prostate cancer, one in eight women also have a lifetime probability of developing breast cancer. Whereas, the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 288,300 new cases of prostate cancer in the U.S. in 2023, resulting in an estimate 34,700 deaths. Whereas, it is estimated 26,970 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year. It is estimated 4,970 Californian men will die from this horrible disease this year. And whereas, the incidence of prostate cancer is more than 70% higher in black men than white men for reasons that remain unclear. And whereas, risk factors for prostate cancers are increasing age, African ancestry, a family history of the disease, and a certain inherited genetic conditions. And whereas, the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 32% when it spreads to other parts of the body. Whereas, early-stage prostate cancer usually causes no symptoms, late-stage prostate cancer commonly spreads to bones and causes pain in several areas of the body. Whereas, the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their health care providers and make an informed decisions about whether to be tested for prostate cancer. And whereas, the City of Millbrae joins communities across our nation to increase awareness about the importance for men and to make an informed decisions with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now therefore, we, the members of the City, members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Prostate Awareness Month. Just to share a little bit of that, as I did ask the mayor to let me do this proclamation, because back in 2015, I lost my father-in-law with prostate cancer. He is one of those 4,970 Californian men and one of those 32,000, 34,700 men in the U.S. who had that disease. And he is one of those 32% that has spread to other parts of his body. And, you know, he left at the age of 70, relatively young age, for an Asian man. So he certainly did his job and his family, raised three beautiful children, and one of them is whom I married too dearly, and, you know, four beautiful grandchildren. But this disease did take him away and at least cut 20 years short in his life. So being as, you know, as close to me as it does to anybody, I want to bring about this awareness, this, this, while many men, as we continue to grow and age, most of us would most likely, hopefully, die with this disease rather than die because of this disease. Doesn't change the fact that we need to do everything we can to stop this disease from causing any more pain and any more deaths. So with that.
My apologies. We have with us tonight Dr. Barry Chaucer, California Prostate Cancer Coalition Board. Please join and join the councilmen, and then if we want to do a photo.
Would you like to say if you were, doctor?
It's going to be very difficult for me to improve on what you said, because that's exactly the story that's told so many times over. I started treating cancer patients when I had a lot more hair, and I've seen in that interim, too many men who come in with painful bone metastases and progressive weakness and just wasting as the, as the disease spreads and progresses. And as you, very, very well put, the answer is to catch this disease when it's localized before it has spread, although there are some treatments for when it has spread, which can be effective and put you in remission. The remission is only temporary, and eventually you do relapse and are faced with pain and the weakness. The PSA acts as a marker. Consequently, the American Cancer Society, as you mentioned, his pushes and organizations that I'm involved in, like the Cancer Prostate Cancer Coalition, advises men at least by the age of 50 to get PSA tests. If you're African-American or there's a family history of prostate cancer, you should start at least five years earlier. In any event, always review with your physician what his feelings are and where you fit into the scope of getting a PSA test. But I'd urge you all and the whole community to review this serious topic. It's a, it's a very serious public health problem. Thank you. And again, I really appreciate you calling attention to the fact of prostate cancer.
Doctor, please join us with a photo.
Okay. I think I'm up next, Madam Mayor. Make sure I get your team.
And next is proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2023 as National Community Planning Month. Councilman Pappan is going to read it, but if we could have our Community Development Director Andrew Mogensen, Planning Director Roscoe Mata, and did I see Jennifer? Is Jennifer with us tonight?
Come on, Jennifer.
Jennifer, come on up. And our Assistant Planner Jennifer Limb.
Excellent. Welcome, everyone. The City of Millbrae, California proclamation, "Change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places." And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight, highlight how many planning, how planning, sorry, is essential to recover, to recovery, and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of our planning commission and those residents who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Millbrae. And whereas, we recognize that many valuable contributions made by professional community planners of the City of Millbrae and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Community Planning Month in the City of Millbrae in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the time of year when we show our recognition and our gratitude to the participation of everyone here at the city, not just my planning staff and those folks here who work day in and day out, but also of the residents, the planning commissioners, and our committee members, who are all participating in the planning process, as well as you, our council members. And we show, this is an opportunity for us to show our gratitude and our thanks for everyone. Much like the City of Millbrae, the American Planning Association in California is also celebrating its 75th anniversary this year. So we just wanted to take time out to thank everyone for their efforts, and we'll be doing so throughout the month of October.
Excellent. Group photo? Oh, group photo.
We have a long agenda, so.
The mayor's are coming up. That is not red tape around our community development directors. No, that's actually red tie. We eliminate red tape in the City of Millbrae when it comes to planning and community development.
We should celebrate that by cutting it.
City Manager, former planner, you want to join us?
I brought you some presents from Cal City. I'm sure it's more planning documents, you know?
Next proclamation is proclaiming the month of October 2023 as Fire Prevention Month. And Councilman Cahalan is going to read that. And we have our Central County Fire Department Fire Marshal Patty Coke to accept.
Whereas, the City of Millbrae is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Millbrae. And whereas, U.S. fire departments responded to 379,500 home fires in 2020, resulting in 2,630 civilian deaths, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas, working smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, all residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas, residential fire sprinklers are a life safety system that may keep a fire small and allow time for all family members to escape. And whereas, a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas, first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2023 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Cooking Safety Starts With You," effectively serves to remind us it is important to develop a practice, develop and practice your family home fire escape plan. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Fire Prevention Month.
Thank you for recognizing Fire Prevention Month. This year, we are focusing on cooking safety in the home, cooking fires being one of the leading cause of residential fires. Cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. That's this year's theme. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we want a photo? 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 I'm counting my steps today.
All right. Haven't mentioned, this is probably a really good time to go open up your go-kits. And we're going to be talking about new website design. Hopefully, the new website will have a list of what you should have in your go-kit. That means if you are, if your house is in danger of catching on fire, you've got a bag with shoes, medical insurance paperwork, some other additional items, and usually food for a few days. And I would love to see us, now that we're getting back to normal, have a go-kit prep day and maybe challenge everybody in Millbrae to get our go-kits ready on that. So not just your CERT go-kit or your Red Cross go-kit, but now your personal family and your pet go-kit. So I have my go-kit with the pets, carriers, if we have to leave the house quickly. This is that month coming into October to think about that. So thank you very much, and thank you, CCFD, for keeping us safe. Okay. This last thing is not a proclamation. A couple of young ladies came up to me back in January or February and said, "We'd like to do this program. We're high school students, and we want to teach middle schoolers about government and legislation." And it came in in a busy time of year, and these young people were very, very consistent in getting back to me. And what they did is they did indeed create a program to And what they did is they did indeed create a program to teach middle schoolers about government. And I want to give a few thanks before I call all these young people up, but thank you to the city manager, thank you to our recreation director in the back, Hannah Moran, and to the city clerk, and to our program project manager, Eduardo, because we hadn't done this in a number, well, we actually have never done a program like this, and we learned a lot around the way, so I always have to give a huge shout out to the Millbrae Leos Club, because it turns out they needed to rent the room and had to have insurance, and to the Millbrae Lions, who donated the money to cover up for the room rental on that. But basically, I was their chaperone for five days, sitting here in this very council chamber, watching the teenagers, the older teenagers, teach the youngers and the tweens about government. And it's so absolutely heartwarming to see young people take this upon themselves. This is not school credit. This is not anything, just a desire to help kids have access to local government. So it is my honor to welcome, and our honor to say thank you to the following young people, and if you'll please come on up on that and say thank you. I will tell you, they did something very timely. They had different topics, and one of the topics was how old you should be when you should no longer do public service. And the middle schoolers said 60 years old is too old, and I had to sit in the back and say, "Ah." So that's very timely talk. It really was a beautiful program. So please, if you could join me, we have Elizabeth Boers, who was one of the first two people that reached out to me, and Zareen Cheng. Zareen, who, we're going to do a big clap after that. Zareen also serves on our youth advisory council, right? And Elizabeth Chen. Jamie or Jaime Lazaro. Tinglong Su. Zainab Masri. And Diana Galindo Aguiar. I got to tell you, you couldn't have picked a harder group to try to teach as middle schoolers, and you did a fabulous job.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. We are the Youth Legislative Parliamentary Program Leaders, and we would just like to thank the City of Millbrae for giving us this opportunity to be able to run the Youth Legislative Parliamentary Program this summer of 2023. We'd first like to thank Mayor Schneider for being our program advisor and being our biggest supporter throughout the duration of this program from start to finish. Mayor Schneider, we just wanted to let you know that we couldn't have done this without you, and you're really, really amazing. We definitely look forward to run this program again the next summer with the City of Millbrae. Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank the rest of the City Hall staff. We had Miss Elaine Tran, who helped us set up every morning, Mr. Eduardo, and even Mr. Tom Williams, who helped us with speeches and even gave us advice throughout the week. So I just, we just all wanted to say thank you so much for supporting us. Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, just real quick. What a great week, and thank you especially to the leadership that you all provided. Congratulations on a success and a great week in starting something here in Millbrae that, as you mentioned, years to come, every summer. So thank you for your leadership and the job well done. Thank you.
I know all of us on City Council and all of our staff really want the young people of the community to know that we are accessible and government is accessible, and that they can change the world. So very pleased on that. It'll come up under council comments, but the city manager and I today attended a meeting with the San Mateo Unified High School District and other mayors, and the high school district is asking all of our help in making sure that 100% of our children graduate from high school on that. But it was really great that I could stand up there today and say, "Hey, because of these young people, we brought youth into government" on that. So you made me very proud today, and the superintendent of the school district has heard about you all, so thank you so much. And to your parents, thank you for the time that you let your kids do that. It takes special parents to have special kids. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number two, Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. City manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, city manager. So this past Saturday at 9:30 to noon, we had our coastal cleanup day. It was a great success. We had more than 50 volunteers that joined us in picking up trash and litter throughout the city. And I just wanted to say thank you to Andrea Papajon, our environmental service manager, for coordinating it, and to all the community volunteers for their excellent work in helping keep Millbrae clean and clearing storm drains that flow into the bay. There was an awful lot of cigarette butts out there, so we should probably do a campaign on smoking and how it's bad for your health, because I personally picked up about 800, actually a little over 800 cigarette butts myself, so.
I would add that once they get into the ocean, they're a toxic bomb.
Yeah, yeah.
Very poisonous.
So anyway.
We have a littering ordinance we should enforce.
It was a, it was a great job, and thank you to all the community volunteers. Also, kicking off yesterday is the Millbrae Historical Society Scavenger Hunt to celebrate the Millbrae 75th Anniversary. There are 12 pictures of Darius Mills that have been hidden throughout the city. They're in plain sight, actually, and so the City of Millbrae is named after Darius Ogden Mills. People can find these, submit their entry with the pictures to win special prizes from the City of Millbrae and the Millbrae Historical Society. Prizes will be given until we run out, or until November 1st, whichever, whichever, whichever is first. So join us, join the Historical Society in the scavenger hunt, take a photo of yourself or who you're with, with Ogden Mills, Darius Ogden Mills, and submit it to the Millbrae Historical Society at bit.ly backslash Millbrae Scavenger Hunt. And you can also check our website or the Millbrae Historical Society's website. We have a series of events coming up, starting this Sunday, October 1st, from 10:30 to 4:30 is the Japanese Cultural Festival. The Japanese Cultural Festival takes place at the Millbrae Library parking lot. The festival aims to showcase various aspects of Japanese culture and is open to the public. So again, this Sunday, October 1st, over at the library parking lot from 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Also, Thursday, October 5th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. is the mayor's State of the City. So please join Mayor Schneider in the David J. Chakuti Room for the mayor's State of the City. That is again, Thursday, October 5th, 6:00 to 7:30 in the David J. Chakuti Room. Saturday, October 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. is a compost giveaway. Environmental programs will, and part of this is to give the compost away, again, Saturday, October 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will be on the Millbrae Spur Trail off of Millbrae Avenue between Palm Avenue and Elder. So bring, you need to bring your own shovel and container, and we'll provide the compost. Friday, October 13th, starting next 6:30 is again, our Millbrae Goes to the Movies. Monsters, Inc. will be playing, and so join, join the City of Millbrae in movie in the park with the free showing of Monsters, Inc. The show will be, this will be our last one that will be outside, and it will start at sundown. And sundown is getting sooner, so probably around 7 o'clock, 7:00, 7:15. And then lastly, Thursday, October 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. is our downtown concert series, Bees Brews and Vines, featuring Busta Groove. We had them last year, very popular band, so please come out and enjoy our local restaurants. Great music with Busta Grooves, again, Thursday, October 19th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and this is at the intersection of Hillcrest and Broadway. And that concludes a quick update, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager. Agenda item number three, Approval of Minutes. We have special meeting minutes of May 9th, 2023, and regular meeting minutes of May 9th, 2023. This is an action. Any council comments? Seeing new.
Second, Pappan.
Motion by Councilman Fung, second by Councilwoman Pappan. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
The two sets of minutes are approved by, as presented by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you, city clerk. Next, we have agenda item number four, Oral Report from City Committee or Commission Chairs. We have no reports tonight. Moving on to public communication. This is for people here in the room, or on Zoom, or by phone, who might want to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any speaker slips. I have one speaker, oh, two speaker slips. And I don't know who we have on Zoom, so I think I'll keep it to three minutes, but two minutes would be great. With that, and again, these are for items not on the agenda, if there are the public watching out there, we do have Wordify for translation. It's always best if you reach out to the city clerk ahead of time so that we can make sure we get the right language for you. With that, Ron Raquel, and then Gina Miranda. Let's go to three. I know these two, I'm sure they're going to keep it to two, but we'll stay at three with only two.
Hello, City Council. My name is Ron Raquel. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This afternoon, I was crossing Millbrae and Magnolia Avenue, and guess what? I almost got hit again. This was at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. I was in the middle of the pedestrian crossway, we're at the right of way. I was right in the middle, and cars start to inch out, then start to gun it, and I put my hand up, and they stopped. And then, three weeks ago, at 9 o'clock on a Friday evening, when you had that incident at Mills High School on Murchiston, I was crossing, and a car just decided to gun it, and I walked back, because I knew I was going to be a bowling pin if I tried to challenge it. I don't know what I have to do to emphasize, to get you guys to communicate with me. I know you're working on it, but I've had yet zero contact from the City Council. What do I have to do? I mean, are we going to have someone say thoughts and prayers, which are very hollow words at the end, if a car, two cars collide or a pedestrian? I mean, what is it going to take, a fatality or an accident, for the City Council to act on this? I'm out of words, and you know my spiel, and I don't want to take all your time, but eventually someone is going to die at that intersection, and thoughts and prayers are very hollow words.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. And City Council can't speak on items not on the agenda. Gina Miranda.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gina Miranda, longtime Millbrae resident of about 30 years, and you may know me. I do a lot of work in the community. I specialize in engaging with folks to, so we can get this Millbrae culture going, and I have an event, we have an event coming up in October for Day of the Dead. So that's just an example of one thing I do. But the reason I'm here today is because I wanted to talk about land acknowledgements, and these are Indigenous land acknowledgements that you may be familiar with, where we talk about Millbrae sitting on land that was formerly populated by the Rematushaloni in this case. And I just want to keep talking about it, because I think it's very important for us to learn a lot about where we are. And I know the Millbrae Historical Society has taken a good interest in this, and I'm going to be speaking to their board later this week, but I just wanted to say that we, I thought it was important to continue to push for land acknowledgements, because it shows that we're educating ourselves about what we're doing, who we are as a people, and how we're supporting this land that we live on. There's so many things we do, and we've already talked about successes with coastal cleanups and all that that Millbrae is already supporting. So I would love to keep the conversation going on success stories about around, and doing that on a regular basis, to normalize it during our council meetings, during other meetings, and folks can all talk about their different successes. So just in closing, land acknowledgements, yes, they're words, but there's so much that we can do to take action on those, on those different values with keeping our land clean and avoiding some of these flooding problems that we have, and just taking care of ourselves, our land, and getting community involved to do this, too. That's, that's, that's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. City clerk, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we do. We have four hands raised. So the first speaker is Grace X. Please state your full name for the record, please.
Grace Shora.
Please go ahead, Grace.
At the last City Council meeting, I attempted to bring this issue up. It was repeatedly muted, and the last time I was muted, I was not given the opportunity to unmute myself, despite what others have claimed. While discussing the La Quinta project on Nextdoor, Goodman's daughter posted some comments that I felt were offensive enough to report. Thus, I decided to click on her name and report her. I noticed in her bio, it stated, "I'm honestly on here to piss off the old, uneducated, white people on this app." I was not trolling, searching for a gotcha moment, as Goodman claims. I was told by another resident who she was. I was shocked.
City manager, I'm sorry, Ms. Arab.
The city attorney would like to weigh in on this.
Okay. Ms. Arab, we've got the city attorney.
The public comment is not relevant to the business of the City Council, so it's not appropriate.
Yes, it is. If you let me finish, and as confirmed by Gina Pappan in an email to me, I'm allowed to make this comment in the beginning of a meeting. She emailed it to me to make it in the beginning of a meeting this time. Do you deny me the opportunity to continue?
If you speak about business of the city, you may continue.
Yes, it is business of the city. Now you've lost my time. I'd like to restart. Are you going to restart me?
Proceed. You have, you have two minutes.
While discussing La Quinta, oh, excuse me, I was shocked and deeply hurt that someone associated with Council Goodman would write such a thing. And her bio made me question Goodman, given the comments he made about other council members during his Zoom meeting, as well as some online posts directed at me, including calling me passive aggressive, implying I'm a liar, et cetera. In response to Destiny, I asked her if her father approved, and Goodman responded what I feel is a deeply racist statement, which states, "Grace, are you intimidated by my blackness and that of a lived experience of a college student that you will latch onto anything just to get a gotcha moment? As I said before, if the shoe fits." Seems like her profile must have hit home. I am sure she will appreciate your confirmation that you got the message and in fact are pissed off. On Saturday, I bravely discussed.
Comments about the family of members of the City Council are not appropriate at a council meeting.
Not, I'm just about him. I'd like more time. On Saturday, I bravely discussed my concerns with Councilmember Pappan at her sister's event. I am not a racist, and Pappan can confirm the irony of my statement, given my skin color. Pappen can confirm the irony of my state, the statement given my skin color. I supported and donated to Goodman's election campaign, one of only two election campaigns I donated to in the last.
Thank you, Ms. Arab. Time's up. Who do we have next on Zoom?
The next speaker is Wayne Lee.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Members of the City Council, Wayne Lee. I just want to thank staff for their work this weekend. The Autumn Festival was very successful. We estimated about 20,000 people came through, coming through. The whole point was to bring awareness to our downtown and our businesses. And I think many of our businesses reported that they had uptits in sales. And most of the money that we ever, if we make any money, it always goes back to the community. So any investment the city puts into MCC's events goes back to the community. So we want to thank staff for all the work. And also, I want to put a shout out to Marion Kong. She's a recreation commissioner and a woman of the air. She's was very instrumental in many of our events. She did the first new Chinese New Year, sorry, Lunar New Year events. She's put a film festival for youth. She's always giving herself for the city without, without asking for recognition or any of that. But she's a great asset to our community, and I hope that we continue to appreciate her efforts and, and use her wisdom on our commission. We don't have as many Asian commissions in our more visible commissions, and it's good to have her there. Thank you.
Thank you, former Mayor Lee. Next?
Next speaker is Nathan Chan.
Hello, City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. This weekend, I was coming back from the Mid-Autumn Festival that the previous speaker mentioned. And unfortunately, I saw the aftermath of a pedestrian vehicle collision on Victoria and Broadway. I don't think the victim, the pedestrian victim was critically injured because the ambulance didn't speed away, but they definitely loaded an individual into the ambulance. And the driver, the driver of the vehicle did remain there, and the sheriffs did respond and seemed to be handling things. This got me wondering about whether this intersection has been identified as something that, as an intersection to be improved in our planning documents. So I went and saw that it is being marked as a high-visibility crossing improvement in our active transportation plan. Since we're already planning for it, and there was an incident, I think we should consider prioritizing safety improvements for this crosswalk. And then also, Mr. Raquel's intersection, Millbrae Avenue and Magnolia, is also in the ATP. So maybe at the same time, we can, again, figure out a way to prioritize these two intersections to make them safer for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Last one?
The last speaker is Marion. And Marion, if you could state your full name for the record.
Marion Kong. You know, I actually planned the Mid-Autumn Festival over the weekend. And then it is a hard, it's a lot of work, but it also involves many, many organizations in our, in our city. So I want to say thank you to our city staff, especially the PW worker and park worker. They're so good. The four people, four persons team who manage the stage year after year, they are pro. They just put the stage up without any, any hassle. And I also want to special thanks to Craig Desanti, and he's always there for any kind of event. I really thank him for that. And also, thank you for the council, council who's willing to work with the community, community organization to make all these, this kind of a cultural sharing opportunity visible and then reliable. And then, so, I want to thank, special thank to the Millbrae, Millbrae leaders, who they have done the best volunteering work I have ever experienced from them. Thank you for the advisor, Michael Kelly, and also Mayor Anne Schneider. Thank you so much. We'll see you next year.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. City Clerk, do we have anyone else?
There are no other, no other hands raised.
Thank you, City Clerk, and there are no other paper call, handouts. Closing public communication. Moving on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, item number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending August 31st, 2023. This is an informational item. Item six, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an amendment with the County of San Mateo to provide police services in an amount not to exceed $8,823,646 for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Adopt a resolution authorize, agenda, item number seven, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the Agreement for State, Legislative Advocacy, and Lobbying Services with Nielsen, Merximer, Peranello, Gross, and Leone LLP. This is an action item. And number eight, adopt a resolution awarding a construction services agreement to INA contractor for the Millbrae Library and City Hall roof project and appropriating additional project budget in the amount of $195,500 from the general fund. And this is an action.
Move approval of consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen.
Second, five, six, seven, and eight.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Okay.
No, he said second to, okay.
Okay. Any comments? With that, City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
To the public, the agenda item number six, which is increasing, City Manager, do you want to talk what, you didn't mention it in your comments, but we're adding deputies and additional services. Did you want to go into any details so the public knows? Because they rarely, I think, read the agenda packet.
Mayor, you're talking about the contract on item number?
With the Sheriff's Department.
No, I mean, I think that.
Okay. If not, just know that we're adding additional policing services on that. All right, moving on to public hearing. There are no public hearings tonight. And then we are moving agenda item number 12 ahead of existing business. So if staff could be prepared for a discussion and consideration of the appointments to the Park and Rec Commission, this is an action. Staff, do we have a presentation about how our process of how we go about Park and Rec Commission appointees?
No, Mayor, it's to the pleasure of the City Council. You interviewed all five candidates for two openings. So it's at the pleasure of the City Council.
So for the.
Notation second, and, and a vote.
One, one second here. So for, before I open it up for comments from council, this afternoon, starting at 5 o'clock, the City Council interviewed five people who applied for Park and Rec Commission, Mark Chen, David Tavacoli, Marion Kong, Salvador Marino, and Jordan Miranda. And we have finished those. We'll be coming back for this. We just moved agenda item 10 in front of existing business. With that, City Council discussion, we have two positions. We have a four-year position and a two-year position. Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have by chance the announcement for this, what, how it was announced? This was the Park and Rec Commission. I was curious what the applicants were told.
In terms of?
What it's about and?
Yeah, so we, we had a robust community outreach program. We actually received applications, went through the subcommittee of the City Council. We actually extended the timeline of which applications would be accepted.
So was it, I'm sorry, was it described as to what a Park and Rec Commissioner does, that kind of thing?
Correct.
That's what I'm curious to know about.
Yeah. So I can have the city clerk.
If you could share.
Read it.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
And what the announcement was.
So we do our annual recruitment for all commissioning committee at the same time. And so what we, we don't have actual description of every single position. However, we always refer everyone to our website on what each commission committee does. Because we, because we have a recording, recruiting for all across the board for our aid commission committee at the same time. So if there's a particular commission or committee that they're interested in, it is available on our website, and also our information was published in case they have any question about the position itself.
Okay, all right.
Councilwoman, could I just jump a little bit ahead of you? One of the applicants, of the five applicants actually collected two boxes. So community enhancement, of which we still have an opening, and Park and Rec's commission. That would be Mr. David Tavacoli.
All right. So yeah, no, I asked that question as to, first and foremost, thank you to all the applicants for taking the time to apply and for really wanting to participate in the city. It's so important. I thought everybody did a great job along those lines as to what the city means to them and what the program means to them. So I want to thank everyone who stepped up and went through this process and went through the interview. I really was impressed by, I think, the most seasoned resident that we have here, Marion Kong, who's been here for many, many years, and her children grew up here and went through many of the programs, participating in the activities here, and has always been an active participant in the community. I think she would be the most qualified. We have two positions. Is that right, Madam Mayor?
So one four-year, one two-year. Filling, filling in the seat. And for the public, our commissions have a three-term term limit. But for the person appointed to the two-year term, that does not count as one of their term limit periods.
Okay. Can I, I would like to suggest at this time, we take on the four-year term? They both start at the same time. Is that right?
So if I may just make a suggestion to the council, perhaps we can discuss this. It might be fair that if we start out these two new position in this new four-year term, so that both candidates, whoever we appointed tonight, will have the same time served on this commission?
I don't get it. No.
Meaning, if I'm not mistaken, one of the term ends June 30th, 24. The other term ends June 30th, 27.
Right.
So perhaps we could just appoint, whoever we appoint tonight will, instead of considering which one has the shorter term versus the longer term, both would be appointed with a term expiration of 2027.
I'm not sure we can do that. Again, the one-year term does not prevent them, and typically we reappoint, so.
I understand. Legal?
You have the legal ability to do it, but I'm looking at your council action and your packet, and it doesn't mention that the second term going to 2027.
So we're limited.
Public had noticed that you were looking.
Oh.
Otherwise, you'd be able to. I just.
Okay.
Concerned about the limit, what we told people.
So the council, Councilwoman Pappen, because we've got new council members, and we haven't done this in a while, to begin with, we can, and this is a hard thing for applicants. We start talking about individual skill sets shortly. We can do the four-year versus the two-year, or we can just try to find the top candidates on that. Where, where is everybody? Just let's talk about the top candidates before we get into four-year, one-year. Where are you? I'm trying to look at everybody's faces. I can't.
Mayor, I'm trying to do my best to follow parliamentary, but I think that if, I don't know if there was a motion, but if there's a motion, we need to follow the motion.
No, there's no motion. It's just a discussion of whether we do the four-year first and then the one-year. So there's no motion right now.
If I could.
But let's not make a motion. Let's, please, hold off on making a motion. Let's talk about the qualifications.
Well, I was talking about the qualifications. And as to the, I believe, the top candidate in this pool of candidates is Marion Kong because of her community activity throughout decades here, and her participation and willingness to serve in this capacity. Also, I mean, all of her responses to the questions, and I noted everyone's responses here, I thought were very on point as to what the Park and Recreation Committee could benefit from, and as to the, what the community could benefit from.
Okay. Councilwoman Cahalan, thank you, Councilwoman Pappen.
I also want to thank everybody for coming forward and sharing, you know, your passion and your care for our city, and especially for our Park and Rec programming here in the community. And I'm just really impressed with what a variety of folks that we had that come forward with so many different experiences and passions to bring to this. It makes it a really hard decision. I'm glad we have two positions to fill and not just one. I think someone that really stands out to me is Mr. Jordan Miranda. I think it's really exciting to have some new folks into the community, to have a more variety of ages represented. I know Mayor Snyder mentioned that. And something I've seen that Mr. Miranda didn't mention in his comments is, as we've been going through the process of updating the parks, we've had several community meetings, and he's been very active on knocking on doors, putting door hangers on every single door in Marina Vista and Bayside Manor for both the first and second rounds of community meetings, and really coming to Park and Rec Commission meetings, making effort to get to know current commissioners and understand what the role is. He's already shown initiative to being a part of this program already. And so I'm excited about that energy and his excitement that he would like to bring, and truly being on the ground in the community, doing the work with us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Councilman? I, something I would just throw out there. Under the Park and Rec Commission, we have the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And right now, we have one member on the BPAC, which is really hard, given that this Thursday, their CCG, City County Association of Governments Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, is talking about the TDA, please don't ask me to do the acronym, Cycle Three Grant Programs. And the, the new applicant, Mark Chen, has a very strong interest in BPAC. So we've got two positions. I'm hearing comments here. I think, again, I will thank all five applicants. I think they're fantastic. But one of the needs, one of the skill sets, or desires, or interest under Park and Rec right now is to have a BPAC member, unless at a future date, the City Council wants to consider spinning off bike pedestrian into another committee. So that's an option out there. It's not on the agenda tonight, so we can't talk about it. The other thing that I talked to the city manager about earlier today, our regular committees all have alternates, which can help us with quorum on that. It is also not on tonight's agenda, but if we wanted to add an alternate to Park and Rec, we would have to make a decision to bring it back to a future council meeting on that. But I strongly feel, because I look at everything right now through a bike pedestrian lens, that Mr. Chen has ridden all over Millbrae, and that's a really important skill set to bring to us. But I think everyone brings, and I'm going to speak about Mr. Mr. Tavacoli. I know I butchered your name tonight. I'm going to blame my throat tonight. But I met him a few months ago, and he is fairly new to Millbrae, but he is very active with the Community Garden Program. And when I first met him, I said, oh, my gosh, I really want him on our Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, of which we have opens. It's not on the agenda tonight, so I would encourage the subcommittee, because he has done a miracle at our Community Garden, and I think there's a great skill set for there. So again, trying to keep everybody and find a place for everyone tonight, that would be where I am with a couple of issues there. Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor?
Thank you for that comment. As a subcommittee member, it is about engagement. It's about making sure that we're making connections where individuals want to serve, and where they can be, where their expertise can be utilized. And so I think with that in mind, this afternoon, when I was listening, I jotted down some words that I connected with individuals. words that I connected with individuals and some of the words were inspirational, doer, service and community activism, fresh and locked in and committed. And that's from every individual. So we had a really good pool of those of which, that we interviewed. And, you know, obviously, our decision is not going to be easy. With that said, I did, like both Mark and Jordan, I think the other individuals are tremendous opportunity to stay engaged with our city on different fronts and they will, I believe. I believe they've all expressed the willingness to connect and engage in other ways. And so with that said, I'd love to make a motion for the partial term for Mark Chen and a full term for Jordan Miranda.
I'd like to object. I mean. Yeah, but I was prohibited from making a motion. So that's why I'd like to object at this point. You told me not to make a motion and I was going to make a motion.
I can take it back.
The request was to make sure all of us had a chance to speak.
And they haven't yet.
I can take it back if you'd like. We can make a motion for discussion or I can wait and we can try to honor that, but.
Councilman Pappan, my one request that each person would get to explain how they feel Park and Rec needs to be moving forward because we've got these two openings and we have some skill sets. So thank you, Council Vice Mayor, hang on to that.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'd just like to, I'd just like to make a suggestion. If we can hold off the motion until we have a chance to listen to the public on this topic, then I think that, just to be fair for everybody, if that's, the council would agree to that, as a point of order. See, okay, I see.
We've got an agreement on that.
All right. So, sorry, for the public who wish to speak.
That's mine.
I know, I'm sorry, but.
I'll take it. I'll take it.
Because it just gives on. All right.
That's mine. You said that.
All right. I have no written comment cards. I have a comment for Agenda Item 10, not 12.
Is Councilmember Fung going?
Yeah, I'm going to make a comment. I was going to make a comment because I see public wanted itching to speak. That's why I want to just put people at bay. Past experience as a commissioner, it's invaluable. We need to recognize that, obviously. I think leadership is something that we discuss a lot and half of that, I will say, coming from showing up. That's the first half. And the other half is consistency, meaning keep coming over and over and over again and just being persistent is extremely important. That's part of being a leader. And recognizing the diversity of our city and how, you know, being able to recognize and discuss the need of our community, coming from this beautiful diversity that we do have. You know, Ms. Kong, she has her community involvement pretty well proven within our community because showing up day in and day out, event after event, engagement after engagement, especially when we needed everyone the most as a city. So I think her work was outstanding and I will say is pretty widely recognized by a lot of members of our community. So being able to also help out with the effort to engage with some of the ethnic communities we have, as she discussed this afternoon, and being able to use her language ability to help, that's also another skill set and not just a skill, but as well as recognizing the need of our community and be able to provide that assistance and to serve our community in her unique way with her ability and answering to that calling. I think that's admirable. So I believe, you know, as a city, we are better for community members such as this. So I think she's certainly highly qualified to serve in the Park and Rec and I would certainly be more than happy to vote for her to be one of our commissioners.
Council, go ahead, Councilwoman.
May we ask a question of the applicants?
We can, if the applicants are here. We ask them all to come back for that. But if they're here via Zoom, that would be acceptable, city manager, city attorney? Okay, they don't need to be here in person if we, if some of the council has a question for them.
It's a very quick question for each person.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Cahalan.
If applicants could share if you speak another language and if yes, which language or languages?
If you could both, please come up to the podium. And please state your name.
Yes, hi. My name is Jordan Miranda and I speak Spanish as a second language.
Thank you.
David Tavacoli, I speak Farsi or Persian.
Thank you.
Does Mr. Chen want to answer that question as well?
Thank you. I missed you in the back, Mr. Marino, please come forward.
Salvador Marino, Spanish?
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Chen.
Speak broken Taiwanese.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cahalan, anything else of the candidates? Okay. Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you. So I only spoke about one of the candidates and again, it's very nice to know. I did, so, again, appreciate everyone speaking today and things that stood out on the two other candidates that we spoke about, the rest of the members spoke about, I really liked Mr. Chen's consensus building and looking towards the major needs of the city and also Jordan's outreach to the residents and really being involved locally. I do want to say that the town is not filled with money, so that we are about to get a grant for some of the parks that we have. But again, knowing that this is always an education for everyone. So I do think we have very good candidates here. Balance, again, I think is really important, as was noted, between Marion, who's actually already been on Park and Rec and would add a great deal of institutional memory, and someone new. I think, I'm kind of going back and forth here between Jordan and Mark. Really looking for more building within the community and actually, because I think the reference was just to one side of the city and this really involves all of the city and all of our parks. So I think that will be.
Sir, I see you there. I haven't called public comment yet. Would you do me a favor and fill out a slip so we know who you are and then give it to the city clerk and we will call you as soon as we're at public comment? Thank you.
So those were the aspects I was looking at as for, as involvement and the kind of breaking it down with the applicants. Just wanted to.
Okay. No, you're going to, you're going to be up here in a moment, but first, for public comments, so opening a, no further comments for council right now. Opening up public comment, first on public comment is Honorable Marjorie Colapietro. Please come to the podium. And we have one person on Zoom? Okay.
Good evening. The Park and Recreation bylaws read, quote, embrace culture diversity in a safe environment, close quote. Currently, the committee consists of two Caucasians plus one non-Caucasian. There are openings for two additional members with five applicants. I'd like to see the council assist in growing the diversity that reflects the diversity of our Millbrae community. There are some interesting names for you to select. Who would bring fresh, new, diverse and qualified members not only to the Park and Rec Commission, but to our beloved Millbrae? Thank you.
Thank you. Former Mayor Colapietro, let's go to Zoom and we'll come back to the gentleman who's working on his form. City clerk, if you could call the Zoom person.
Mayor, we have four hands raised. The first speaker is Man Global. If you could please state your full name for the record. Man Global, please go ahead and accept the unmute.
Hi, this is Margaret Aim, resident of Millbrae. Dear council members, I believe you all went to Mid-Autumn Festival this past weekend. All members of the community were celebrating this important cultural event. It's a chance for our families and friends to get together and meet with our neighbors and merchants. It's truly a wonderful event with over 10,000 people packed in our downtown each day. Our merchants were happy and, given the amount of food traffics. I do want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to all the heroes behind the scene, including Millbrae Cultural Committee, city public work staff and many more. I would particularly wanted to thank Marion Kong, who championed for this festival before the pandemic. It's been many years that we have had this event and it is without a doubt that this remarkable achievement would not have been possible without Marion's relentless effort. Her passion and determination have been truly inspiring and her commitment to our community is extraordinary. This is actually one of the reasons why she was awarded as Woman of the Year back in 2021, because not only she repeatedly involved with citywide event planning, but also importantly, most importantly, she stepped in to assist our local healthcare workers and the city essential workers to obtain face masks and PPEs. She risked her safety and her health to help others. Given Marion's track record of community involvement, I wholeheartedly believe that she is the most qualified candidate for Park and Rec Commissioner role. I urge you to appoint Marion for this position as she has demonstrated her dedication and leadership and it will, she would definitely will contribute to the betterment of our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next?
All right, next speaker is Stephen Rinaldi. Just give me a quick second to unmute you. Please accept the unmute.
Good evening, Millbrae City Council and citizens of Millbrae. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. To chime in on this agenda piece as I thought it was very important. Millbrae has quite a few different parks and they're amazing. And I, after attending the Mid-Autumn Festival this weekend, I thought it was very important to chime in about this, that one of the candidates that you have that is volunteering for the open position seems to be very qualified and I felt I'd be doing a disservice by not speaking up about how great the Mid-Autumn Festival was, not only because I've never celebrated that holiday or observed it culturally, it was quite the experience. And looking back at Park and Recs, I think someone with that amount of qualification and track record as Marion Kong would be a very good fit for that position. Also, I want to end by thanking all the folks in the city of Millbrae that worked behind the scene tirelessly with her to help throw the Mid-Autumn Festival. It was absolutely amazing and awe-inspiring to see how many people there. And I believe the Millbrae Lions were also involved, so a really big thanks to them as well. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Leos, it was the Leos Club and the Interact Club under Rotary.
All right, next speaker is Amy Lauer.
Good evening, City Council, Parks and Rec Commission interviewers and public who are listening in. My name is Amy Lauer and I serve various roles in and around Millbrae, including I'm your Chair of your Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. I had the pleasure of listening to five interviews this evening and I was really struck. I was struck, particularly struck by the preparedness and the seriousness that Jordan Miranda approached his interview. He was so prepared, he was so thoughtful. He was the only interviewer who mentioned that he had spent one-on-one time with each of the commissioners to start to get to know them. So when he had to answer the question about how would you show up as a team member, he said, well, I'm already in relationship with, I'm already connected. Bringing us into the future is the utmost important, of the utmost importance. And I do believe that as someone who's 16 years old, that it is, you know, my generation's time to step to the side to support younger leaders who can take us to where the younger generations want to go. We've really left our planet in a challenging place and we look around Millbrae and it is rife with environmental concerns. I understand that we want someone who has a balanced view to the city, taking into consideration all elements that affect us with regards to outdoor recreation and services that are provided. But why wouldn't we give someone a chance who's experienced what happens when his neighborhood is neglected? And think about if someone's been, has grown up in a place where the sidewalks are not, are not well taken care of and the parks haven't been updated in 15 years, why shouldn't community events happen throughout the city and not just on the side where beautiful Central Park is? So yeah, I really thought everyone did a beautiful job. Everyone brings different strengths and there is something to be said for experience. I believe people with experience should be in mentor positions. So, and I believe people who are hungry, willing to learn and want to lead their generation should be in leadership positions. So I, strong support for Jordan, specifically based on the strength of his interview. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Last one? Or do we have a few more?
We have one more virtual speaker and the next speaker is Nathan Chan. Nathan, please accept the mute.
Thank you, Millbrae City Council, again, for this opportunity to address you on this important issue. I just also wanted to lend my words of support for Jordan Miranda. I've only known Jordan for a couple of years, but in that time, he's definitely impressed me and others have already mentioned how much he has applied himself in the community and particularly organizing. I think he has very high potential as a leader within our community and I think if the council is willing, they should certainly take that step to cultivate a promising young leader such as himself. So please consider appointing Jordan Miranda to the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. I have one speaker card, so if we have nowhere else on Zoom, I'm going to close down Zoom and bring in, and Mauricio, I hope I'm calling your name correctly, Mauricio Hamani, please come up forward. These speakers, or the microphones can be a little funky, so try to speak straight in. Yep, right up here. Yep. I know, sometimes it's a little awkward. Try it. You're perfect.
Listen. Somebody who has spoken at General Assembly of the United Nations.
Mr. Hamani, could you go a little closer to the mic? We can't hear you.
Saying, somebody who has spoken at the General Assembly of the United Nations. I don't want to waste everybody's time right now. What I'm saying is, I live here, I know Millbrae, walk the streets of Millbrae every day, every day. Ola Cruz, I know Tom. So, yes, I guess, a bizarre way in a really, 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 there might be some horrible things coming, but I'm asking you, all of you, to think about what it means. things coming, but I'm asking you, all of you, to think about what it means to love one another. And we don't know tomorrow, but just be nice to your neighbor. Whenever you wake up, you assume a lot of things, but are you really being nice to your neighbor? Just, it sounds like, because you need that time. Embrace your neighbor. You think it's so easy, but it's not. I have been living in Millbury forever, but when you say hi to your neighbor, are you sure you're saying hi? Is, is it, is that hi? Is it real? Or are you giving me again a fake smile? I'm asking you. Be a better neighbor. Be a better neighbor. That's it. The rest, does it really matter?
Thank you, Mr. Hamani. Any, anybody pop into Zoom while we finish our last by paper? Okay.
No, Mayor.
Closing public comment. I'm going to kind of pipe in here. What I'm hearing is we've got a two-two vote, which makes me the vote breaker. I feel very strongly, and we didn't get it into goal setting, that we need a standalone bike pedestrian, and Mr. Chan, you would be perfect for it. So what I'd like to do is, it's not usual for the mayor to make a motion. I would make a motion to support Marion Kong and Jordan Miranda on this. And then, when it's my, when it's public comment, I'm going to be putting an agenda item for a future council meeting on bike pedestrian on that. So that would be my motion. It doesn't include the two-year, one-year on there. I'm happy to make a friendly amendment to the four-year, one-year version.
I would like to second that with a friendly amendment, if the mayor would accept. Marion Kong for the four-year and Jordan for the, is it two-year?
City Clerk, is it one year or is it two year?
It expires June 30th of 2024.
You're not going anywhere, are you, Jordan?
And you'll sort of be like Supervisor Pine, you might get 13 years out of it.
Okay. I would second that if the mayor would.
I would, I would accept that amendment. Any further discussion, council?
I would like to note, too, that it was very impressive that Jordan had been to the meetings and reached out to the other recreation committee members.
Okay. City Clerk, can you call the vote?
Councilmember Papin.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The city council appoint Marion Kong to the four-year term for the Park and Recreation Commission and Jordan Miranda to the partial term ending on June 30th, 2024, Park and Recreation Commission.
And I want to thank.
Five to zero, sorry.
Thank you, City Clerk. I want to thank all the candidates. Mr. Chan, you've already heard where I'm going. Mr. Tavacoli, I can't, I'm not technically supposed to speak on it, but our interview committee is Councilman Fung and the Vice Mayor for the Community Enhancement, which is our garden pollinator adopt a spot program. And Mr. Marino, what I heard from you today was a very strong interest in equity, and coming up shortly on our agenda is a discussion of the social equity plan and then the commission for that. So I strongly encourage you to think about that one and pay attention to our council meetings. Please stay and watch that council meeting, because what I heard from you was a great interest on equity. I didn't mention it before, but I am very pleased that we have more committee members, both young, both representing two different races within our very diversity of Millbury, but also coming from our east side. Mr. Marino, you are also from the east side in a community that we want to spend a lot of time and attention with, and I think the Social Equity Commission will be really good for that. So I want to congratulate Marion Kong, and I want to congratulate Jordan Miranda. And you might not all know this, but I believe that Mr. Miranda is our first Native American committee or commission member, so I could not be happier on that. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you, council, for a very respectful discussion, and thank you to all five. And we'll move on to the next agenda item. All right, we are moving back to existing business, and the first item under existing business, this is exactly, Mr., Mr., if, no, 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 Mr. Marino, don't leave. Mr. Marino, come back. Our next agenda item is adopt a resolution approving the social equity framework as part of the city's social equity plan. It's an action item. City manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council, as you all know seated here, has made a strong commitment to building a stronger, equitable, and more inclusive community here in Millbury. Back on June 27th of this year, the city council adopted Resolution 23-49, and it entered into a professional services agreement with Environmental Justice Solutions, EJ Solutions. In terms of the social equity framework, which will be presented tonight by the team at EJ Solutions, they were tasked with developing just that, the city's social equity plan. And so as part of that process of developing the social equity plan, EJ Solutions has drafted the first phase of social equity framework for council review and adoption this evening. So I would like to introduce and bring up for the presentation, Ms. Marybel Tobias. She is the principal and founder of EJ Solutions, and Mr. Colin Miller, who is a senior associate with the firm. We've been working closely with her team. It's been outstanding as we've kicked this off. And just, just for further information for the council, I've also started a staff equity committee that will be working with EJ Solutions, and internal into the city operations as part of this process. So without any further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce Marybel Tobias for her presentation.
And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, council members, and members of the Millbury community. As you just heard, my name is Marybel Insegu Tobias. I'm the founder and principal of Environmental Justice Solutions. We're a consulting collective based in the Bay Area. We're very excited to be here today to kick off this planning process. Our full team is not here today, but we were all at the Mid Autumn Festival on Sunday and enjoyed chatting with folks from the community. So I'll be co-presenting with our senior associate, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Thanks, Marybel. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, council members, staff, and community members. My name is Colin Cook Miller, and I'm also very glad to be here with you all. And I just want to briefly acknowledge, too, that we are here on unceded ancestral Ramatish Aloni territory, and we'll be sharing more about that later.
Thank you. Next slide. So today, we're going to speak to you about the social equity framework and planning process that we've developed for the city of Millbury. It's a custom framework and process for Millbury that draws from what has worked in other cities, particularly in small cities across the nation. Our objective through the community engagement process is to develop a consensus-based mandate for closing equity gaps in the city of Millbury. During this planning process, the community will come together to co-develop solutions based on priority community needs, and everyone will be heard. No policy will be proposed for the final plan until there are no blocking concerns. The community will create effective policy and programs that allocate resources to those who are unable to meet their needs, resulting in a safer community for everyone. This process will define Millbury as a place where every resident, worker, business, student, and even visitor can meet their needs and has an opportunity to thrive. So today, we'll discuss our strategic approach, our grounding and shared values, the social equity framework itself, and an overview of the planning process. Next slide. We are applying a multi-pronged strategic approach to community engagement that will leave no one out and leave no one behind. Because inclusivity rejects a one-size-fits-all approach, we have strategies to reach historically marginalized communities, including single parents, young people, elders, indigenous groups, immigrant and refugee communities, people with disabilities, unhoused people, and other diverse stakeholders. We want the final plan to reflect Millbury's unique assets and challenges and touch on all aspects of social equity that are important to Millbury. The final plan will be an evergreen plan that the city will revisit and revise on a periodic basis as new developments, laws, or circumstances call for changes to the plan. Next slide. Thank you. Disparities in the access to and quality of resources create equity gaps in the experiences of different communities. The American Planning Association writes that planning for social equity means identifying the practices that contribute to or simply ignore the disparities that are experienced by certain communities and proactively working inclusively and transparently with harmed communities to improve the city from the ground up. As James Baldwin said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced."
Next slide, please. So grounding a planning process, or any other process, in our shared values helps us to find common ground. In fact, our shared American values and ideals work to bind us together as a diverse nation with profound hope for the future. Social equity is underpinned by four key values that most of us share. Next slide, please. Equal opportunity is perhaps one of our highest American ideals. Equled access to opportunity means that every Millbury community member has a fair chance to exercise their human rights, honor their dignity as a human being, and achieve their full potential. It means secure economic livelihoods, full civic participation, and shaping the decisions that affect us. Resources are available to recover after missteps or misfortune, and ensuring equal opportunity requires us to be responsible to each other in the present and to exercise our duty to ensure that future generations will thrive. Next slide, please. As forces threaten our national, our democratic institutions at the national level, we embrace deep democracy at the local level. This looks like all Millbury community members being invited to participate, debate, and have real ownership in the public dialogue. This means not only the right to vote and freedom from censorship, but also affirmative opportunities to learn, communicate, and shape decisions that affect us. Next slide, please. While life itself often feels unfair, all of the rules, policies, and programs we adopt do strive to be fair. This means that no part of our individual identity, such as race, ethnicity, gender, age, disability, sexual orientation, citizenship status, financial status, religion, or expression, should have a detrimental effect on access to resources or opportunity. Next slide, please. And finally, another one of our high ideals is achieving the combination of efficient and effective policymaking. A lack of meaningful input can mean that decision-makers blind spots negatively impact the effectiveness of their policymaking by leaving some groups or issues out, or by crafting solutions that just don't work for certain folks. So this spectrum of community engagement moves from marginalizing or ignoring certain communities all the way to community ownership of decision-making. Empowering marginalized community ownership of decision-making that impacts them increases local efficiency in solutions, development, and implementation, which is essential to achieving equity. An inclusive community ownership of a planning process is the best practice that enables policymaking to be as efficient and as effective as possible. Consensus-based planning, community ownership of decision-making means more issues are raised, ineffective policy approaches are scuttled, members of impacted communities benefit from policies and programs, and no one is adamantly opposed or left out.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Adopting a social equity framework is a commitment to promote justice and equity in the provision and distribution of public services and in public policy implementation. The process begins with looking critically at existing social disparities to understand the roles the public institutions have played in creating those disparities and can play in eliminating them. Understanding that everything, sorry, understanding everything that comes under the umbrella of social equity can be complex. We do not live single-issue lives, and social equity touches on almost every aspect of our modern life. Complicating matters further is the fact that all of the different aspects of social equity intersect in many ways. For example, racial and gender disparities can be found in almost all issue areas, and other determinants of social well-being impact all the other issues as well. For instance, disparate access to things like affordable housing, living wages, and healthcare create disparities in physical and mental health, climate resilience, as well as gender, age, and disability outcomes, to name only a few examples. Next slide. Oh, sorry, go back. So we have created this social equity framework to help the city of Millbury effectively and thoughtfully address all of the overlapping issue areas and ensure equitable outcomes for years to come. So next slide. If you can just click three times. Thank you so much. One more. Okay. So over the course of this planning process, we will be collecting qualitative data from the Millbury community, and in addition, EJ Solutions is gathering quantitative data to build an understanding of existing conditions and disparities in Millbury. The social equity data brings to light underserved areas and will form a baseline for the data-driven decision-making over the next few months. We will gather that data and, along with maps, into a baseline community needs assessment report that will allow the city to measure progress toward eliminating disparities. The baseline report will also map out the assets in the community that community members currently derive significant benefit from, and will name any barriers to access. So as you can see on this slide, there are five census tracts in Millbury. Our initial research reveals that Census Track 604400 in East Millbury experiences the greatest environmental and socioeconomic burdens. In addition, the existing conditions report prepared for the general plan update shows that 6% of Millbury residents live below 100% of the federal poverty level, 13% live below 200% of the federal poverty level. There are several other statistics here on the slide that show some of the most burdened communities in Millbury. Next slide. Another important community that we are intentionally engaging are the people indigenous to the Millbury area. We acknowledge that the city of Millbury is on unceded ancestral Ramatish Aloni territory, and Ramatish Aloni people are still here today. Additionally, indigenous peoples from many other nations make their home in this region. We recently met with Jonathan Cordero, Executive Director of the Association of Ramatish Aloni and Chairman of their tribe, and we look forward to partnering with them in this process because there is not much quantitative data that is available in public data sources on this, on this group. So close partnership with these, the Association of Ramatish Aloni and other indigenous groups is invaluable to this process.
Thank you, Maribel. Next slide, please. So a vision statement is a brief guiding statement that articulates what participants would like to see realized through their efforts. The vision provides a foundation that helps to determine the appropriate policies and programs to adopt. So we begin this process with a draft vision statement. The final version will be co-developed by the community: residents, business owners, workers, commuters, and recently displaced residents through the planning process, building from the visions and guiding principles created for the general plan. So our initial draft vision statement reads, "Achieving social equity means eliminating disparate impacts and removing all barriers that prevent full civic participation so that no one is left behind individually, collectively, or culturally. Everyone who works, lives, or goes to school in Millbrae can meet their priority needs in all of the key determinants of social well-being. Identity is not a factor in determining access to resources, and Millbrae is a place where everyone can participate, prosper, and reach their full potential." So you'll see that the last three statements are color-coded. They match the zones of social equity, which we'll discuss on the next slide. Thank you. So we created the social equity framework to enable our planning process to comprehensively address each of the overlapping circles in the Venn diagram of social equity, both individually and intersectionally. We identified three larger categories or zones of social equity and color-coded them, as you can see on this diagram. So a key determinant of social well-being, excuse me, is a concept modified from the concept of social determinants of health to go beyond health impacts, to consider a broader set of social and public policy factors that determine well-being and quality of life within a city. Fairness based on identity is, of course, intrinsic to social equity. And the final zone zeroes in on the spheres of action where the city of Millbrae is solely in control, such as staff hiring and retention. So on the slide around each zone are examples of the spheres and issues that it encapsulates. Next slide, please. So our research, experience, and preliminary engagement tell us that the 17 spheres of social equity that we've developed for Millbrae should be relatively comprehensive of all the issues that we anticipate coming up. We will work with the community committee to define and flesh out fully what each of the spheres of social equity mean in relation to Millbrae and identify the issues that fall under each sphere. Key determinants of social well-being are physical and mental health, public and household safety, food security and nutrition, economic livelihood, education, environment and climate, housing, transportation, and technology. Next slide, please. Social equity spheres of fairness include disability, language and immigration status, race and ethnicity, gender and sexuality, and age. Next slide. And finally, within the city's direct control and ability to take action include city hiring and pay, city services, and infrastructure.
Thank you, next slide, please. The penultimate step of this framework is categorizing the equity impacts needed through public policy. To address the social issues in each sphere of social equity, harmful impacts need to be reduced or eliminated, beneficial resources need to be increased, and human rights, including civil, political, economic, social, and cultural, should be ensured. As social issues within each sphere are identified, this part of the framework will help identify the desired equity impacts from which public policy and program proposals will flow. Next slide. Social equity includes two fundamental components, that is procedural and substantive equity. Procedural equity looks at whether members of the community have been meaningfully involved in the political process. Substantive equity refers to both the policies and programs that are developed and their results or outcomes. We will be measuring, is anyone better off as a result of what we've done? And the final plan will include key performance indicators that enable Millbrae to track its progress toward its equity goals.
Next slide, please. In our planning process, the consensus-oriented strategies that we use are discussion-based and deliberative. We will use integrative consent, which means generating a proposal, developed with community input for shared agreement, and working to modify it until consensus is reached. Unlike a majority rules vote, proposals do not move forward until there are no blocking concerns. Next slide. So here we are in the timeline. Today, council to adopt the social equity framework. By November, we would love the council to appoint the social equity community committee. Between December of this year and February of next year, we intend to hold our first community workshop, assessing community needs and mapping community assets. Between March and June of next year, we intend to hold our second workshop on developing solutions. Between August and November of next year, we will have our first draft of the plan and our first town hall to review the draft. Between December of next year and February of 2025, we anticipate having our final draft completed and our second town hall to review that, and we look forward to city council adopting a final plan by March 2025.
Next slide, please. So we are recruiting for a community committee for social equity and cultural inclusion, which is at the heart of this planning process. As we've mentioned before, current and recent residents, students, workers, business owners, everyone in the Millbrae community, at least a cross-section of the Millbrae community will be represented by the committee, and they will help us to shape the plan, develop the asset map, and baseline community needs assessment report, as well as help us to extend and improve our outreach efforts. Part of the committee's work includes cultivating relationships with additional community networks and organizations that will be needed to implement the equity plan over the long term. We plan to recruit 11 to 15 members to the committee, two from each council district, and up to five at-large members. As I mentioned, the composition will reflect Millbrae's diverse community in all aspects. We anticipate meeting with the committee about two times a month over the next year. And at the end of the planning process, we anticipate the committee transitioning to become a permanent commission here in Millbrae on social equity. So we have already begun recruitment of committee members. We have, oh, next slide, thank you. We have already begun recruitment of committee members. We have flyers and outreach materials in English, Spanish, and Chinese, and have been sharing them with over 40 community organizations and agencies in Millbrae and San Mateo County. The deadline to apply is October 15th. So far, as of today, we have received 10 applications to the committee. We look forward to many more people applying. EJ Solutions will vet and select the final candidates, which city council will appoint together as a slate.
Thank you, next slide. So we intend to reach a broadly representative cross-section of Millbrae and bring diverse communities and perspectives together to build consensus. All of our meetings will provide language interpretation in Spanish and Chinese, Cantonese and/or Mandarin if needed. And the community engagement process will bring together stakeholders from across the city and ask them to share their work and lived experiences, identify intervention points where conditions should be improved, identify things that they love and don't want to see changed, and describe the future changed conditions that they want to see. All of our engagement will be a two-way street that will include sharing the data we gather about impacted communities within Millbrae with community residents. The Millbrae workshops are where the broader community will come together to help create the plan, and we look forward to incorporating art, culture, and creativity into our workshops and our town halls. Next slide, please. So once we've worked with community committee members to integrate and synthesize all the input from the workshops, we'll co-develop a draft plan to share in the town halls. The town halls are for critically reviewing and scoring the draft plan using the integrative consent model we were sharing about earlier. We also plan to host the draft plan online and share broadly with community members, which would allow them to share their written comments in a public, transparent form. Plan drafts and the final plan will also be translated into Spanish and Chinese.
Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we ask that you approve the resolution adopting the social equity framework today. Adoption means that all of Millbrae can get on the same page about the process towards social equity and what it means for this city. So we look forward to answering any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, and then we'll open it up to public comment and then come back to council on that. Council? Councilwoman Cahalan.
Thank you so much. I sort of geek out on strategic plans. And this is, I mean, it's just so obvious, the deep knowledge and experience that you all bring to this. It's thoughtful, it's holistic, it's strategic, but not only that, it has a heart and soul to it. And I just, I'm very excited about having this lens and standards to bring our, you know, to put our policy decision-making against, our designing of our city programs, our thinking about how we all act and interact in this city together, and to measure our success over time. So I'm, thank you very much, and I'm excited about what this will bring to our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. I'm going to echo much of what was just said. I'd just like to thank you for the thoughtful, caring way that you are bringing this before us. This is going to be a transformative opportunity for our city, for our residents, to empower, to engage, and to uplift true equity and representation and diversity of what makes us the community that we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Pappin.
Thank you. It's quite an amazing plan you have here. One concern throughout, and I don't know how you go about this, is really empowering the historically marginalized here, because we really don't want this to be a political issue, or not an issue, but in any way, we're trying to get to the people that haven't, we haven't gotten to before. So it sounds like you definitely have all the background and the knowledge here, and I just, I don't know how you get to those people, because we have had experiences here where there's a significant number of people that are always coming forward, and that's good, we want to encourage that. But then I think it actually deters others who feel disenfranchised and want to be heard here. So the interesting aspect of all the information you've already done here is significant as to the breakdown of our city and the people that live and work here. I just, can you give me some more information on how you actually reach those people that have not participated before? Because I think that's very significant to hear for the public as well. And I'm also very interested, because we want them to determine as working with you in shaping all of this. I really like the way you've shaped it and left it open for the public to determine, because that's what we're really interested here in making the most significant difference. Could you enlighten us a little bit on that?
Mayor, I think we'll take public comment after the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappin, for that great question, and Vice Mayor Goodman, and Councilmember Cahalan for your appreciation. Thank you. To respond to your question initially, and then I'll can pass it over to Maribel as well, we have already reached out to over 40 different community-based organizations and agencies here in Millbrae, and we really, we intend to continue following up with them and specifically connecting more with the organizations that work with historically disenfranchised, marginalized, impacted communities to really get their nominations of folks that they think would be good candidates for this position. And so it's really relying first and foremost on trust-based relationships and social networks with organizations that are doing important kind of community-based and social justice work here in Millbrae. And we also have been doing already community outreach, talking to a number of residents at the Mid-Autumn Festival this weekend, and continue to seek to leverage those kinds of opportunities to be able to talk to everyday residents and invite them to talk to their friends, their family, other community members in their lives and their networks, to spread the word and to get the right pool of candidates.
So real quick, along those lines even further, please. So someone who's not involved in an organization, but, I mean, we have residents who are working in three different jobs just to survive here, and those are the people, I think, that are most impacted and have the least amount of time. So I don't know how you connect with those residents that we have, especially the ones that are 200% below the poverty line. That is, those are the people we really want to make contact with. And you said earlier in your presentation, in Millbrae and San Mateo County. So we are sticking with, in Millbrae, right?
Right, yes. So thank you for sharing your concerns about reaching those populations. There are concerns that we think about all the time, and especially because we're not from Millbrae, we're at a disadvantage in having the direct avenues to some of the community members that we typically would have. So relying on existing organizations who work in the community is our first line of attack. And then as we start to meet more people, build more relationships, we will continue to grow those networks. One of the strategies that we constantly use is going door-to-door canvassing. So once we identify some of the impacted neighborhoods, we'll be there, we'll go to those neighborhoods, and we'll conduct outreach there. So we also, you know, we're thinking about those folks who can't participate in meetings. So we want to have like short online surveys and short online little explainer videos that, where we can collect data and input from folks, even if they don't participate in one of our workshops. So we have different strategies that we're trying to deploy. No one strategy will, you know, will reach everyone. So stacking them all on top of each other will hopefully expand our reach.
That's great. It's very, very impressive. I just, I know how, it's so hard to really get to the people we haven't been able to contact yet, shall I say. So thank you, I'm very impressed and very glad to hear that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappin. Councilwoman Fong, Cahalan, then me, then we'll open it up to the public.
Thanks for being here today. The work that you have done so far is, it's very in-depth analysis. One thing I wanted to discuss a little bit, you mentioned the selection of the committee. It's between 11 and 15, if I'm not mistaken, two from each district and five at large. I think there need to be recognition that, and the representation from different important aspects of our community, such as public safety, between fire and police, school districts. We have two school districts serving our community, because the elementary and middle school is one, whereas the high school is another.
Three school districts.
What's the third one?
Community college.
Oh, community college, excuse me. And so, to that end, also members of the business communities as well, who are doing business within our city, they need to be part of that discussion, because as we embark on these discussions about equity and inclusivity, it's about changing how we serve our people and ensuring everyone felt belonged, and everyone felt included, and everyone is being served equitably. And their access to these services to be equitable as well. So, you know, these are going to be an important part of the discussion, as we're looking forward to improving these very vital services that they, our residents, as in they are using and, and working with every day. So, they need to be a part of that, a large discussion, if members, within those members. So, I think we need to put together some strategy there to outreach these communities and ensuring they're part of this discussion as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilman. You may want to take notes. First, thank you, thank you, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cahalan. Yeah, go ahead. Can you say it on the mic?
Yes, just because mine connected with what Gina said, just didn't connect on the topic. With the community groups, have you all been connected with all the PTAs of the schools?
We have connected with several of the PTAs of the schools, such as, I believe, Mills High School, Black Parents Association, and Latinx Parents Association. Those are two that I know that we've reached out to. I don't have my full contact list with me right here.
Okay. And then, just in thinking of ways that we can reach some of the folks, you know, with some of the greatest challenges, especially economic challenges, I don't know if there's a way to work with the school district to reach the families who qualify for your reduced lunch. We have a, I think it was like 700-something students in our elementary and middle school that qualify in Millbrae. Just ideas.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cahalan. Those are great ideas. We have reached out to the unified school districts, elementary, middle, and high school, and we'll continue to follow up with them and appreciate that suggestion to really specifically speak with the families of free and reduced lunch recipients.
Madam American?
I'm, I guess, Councilwoman Pappen.
Just along those lines, I'm not, we have like two high schools. I know one's technically San Bruno, but looking into what population actually lives in Millbrae at Cappuccino High School, since all the property around it is Millbrae. So, I just want to make sure we're not missing a population. If we could, I'm sure the school district can provide that similarly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Pappen. We've got Cappuccino High School on our outreach list as well.
Oh, good. It's not a coffee, it's a Spanish explorer.
Okay, council ready? All right. You may want to take notes. First, I think it's a great plan. I think the timeline, I really thought we'd get this done in 2021, when I was mayor the last time. So, but if it takes the time, it takes the time. When I read through the documents, it's very, what Millbrae, how Millbrae, how does that? This is my eighth year on city council, and all of us serve on regional committees, and I will tell you from the bottom of my heart that, and I'm reading line, it's on page six of the agenda item here, it says, "Defining Social Equity." "Social equity is a commitment to promote justice and equity in the provision and distribution of public services and in public policy implementation." That sounds great. But we are almost unique in the Bay Area in the number of regional agencies that own us and pay no taxes and pay no fees, that we cover their costs, which means that our city is financially disenfranchised, could be one word. What was the term I picked up from reading environmental justice? We are historically under-resourced in here. And when I read through your plan, I'm not sure you're going to get there in reading this, because you're talking Millbrae people to Millbrae people, and I'm assuming when you had your comment and San Mateo County, you might go to the Gay Pride Association in San Mateo to help identify LGBTQQI issues in Millbrae, that we may not have enough here, but you can go there and find out. And we know that there are people here trying to figure out where they are in life and who they are on that. So, that's what I took from San Mateo County. But I am very concerned, and I talked to you guys before, I come from the environmental field, and I think you were on the call. If you're going to use CalEnviroScreen, CalEnviroScreen does not include noise. We are almost unique internationally in the noise impacts that we have come from in back of the airplanes. The FAA does not count the data. If the FAA doesn't count the data, Caltrans doesn't count the data. We are incredibly unique here. And you could look at Bayside Manor and assume that it's the closest to the runways and have the worst noise. And the thing that we learned from COVID is noise interrupts sleep, and that increases your health impacts, and it increases or decreases a child's ability to learn or adult concentration on that. But that data is still coming out. But it turns out that that noise can actually be louder right up here than it is down there because of the unique function that noise works. And again, no agency is following that yet. Now, we're working at the FAA level to change the noise metrics, and we, as the city of Millbrae, have been working on that and being one of the leads on that. But I will also tell you, when I tried to get monitoring SFO to be a regional responsibility, I heard back from the chair of the SFO roundtable just a couple of week, couple of months ago, that it is Millbrae's job to keep an eye on San Francisco and not anybody else, San Francisco Airport, and not anybody else in this community. And then, just last Monday, One Shoreline allowed San Francisco to come into a board meeting, of which we are represented by a different city, and talk about what SFO is going to do for sea level rise. And I was given two minutes to talk about Millbrae's concern, and yet, San Francisco places the burden on Millbrae. So, that's the kind of equity that I don't know if this program is going to cover. And if it isn't, I mean, if it could, tell me, I will be happy, and which is why I want to make sure you interview me, because I have been dealing with this for seven years. And my hope for this committee was not as much as the internal social equity, as the external environmental justice and the fact that Millbrae carries a burden above and beyond any other city in this county. And in fact, we are held to carry the regional burden of the region in many cases for that. And I hope that your program can pick that up. And when I went through the, the plan, there's just some words in there, typically, I'm not a wordsmither, but it seems very Millbrae-centric. And I just want you to realize that, and city manager, what was the term that we were talking about today? It's $1,740 to provide base-level services to every person who lives in Millbrae. But in Milpitas, you are spending $3,300 or $3,800, something like that, that metric.
I don't like to bring up Milpitas, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
My drive since you were canceled. No, I think, you know, on that, and not to debate it, but that's, that's just what our budget is versus what we should be spending based on a level of service and the need for the community. So, we're spending $1,740 per capita, because we only have $40,000, $40 million in our general fund. The need is probably double or triple that, actually, to get to the level of service and everything that we want to be as a community, and that's what we need to identify. Now, this will, you know, be one element, you know, as we look at our budget and we look at, at priorities in the community.
And I would say that I'm old and bitter. I have been on the county bike pedestrian committee, and for the last eight or 10 years, I know where the money has gone. And for example, when you look at some extra special funds thrown into it, South San Francisco, with three times, three times, and a huge economic base, has received about $25 million. We have received $254,000. So, if we want to talk about equity across the system, then the different metrics. So, as long as we're picking up these new metrics, because I told the city manager, I'm a former staffer of San Jose, not ever in my life have I talked about that term, you know, what it costs to provide basic core services, and then our ability to compete, this is why I wanted us to be recognized as an EJ community, our ability to compete for federal dollars. Now, all along El Camino Real, only in San Mateo County, we are identified as an equity-focused area, because CCAG, the City and County Association of Governments, is taking a family income and subtracting the cost of housing. And that made this entire corridor, for the first time, getting closer to becoming an environmental justice or priority equity community, all the different terms that keep changing. And it turns out that we have probably the lowest or the highest, depending on how, we have a very high ratio of residents along this corridor with no car, which is another metric, and I don't know if that's a metric you're including. I'm in Enviro, kind of not having a car is a good thing, but not having a car means more difficulty getting to work, blah, 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 blah. So, do you do, do you dive into those kinds of metrics?
Yes, absolutely. You'll see in the, under the environment and climate sphere, we, we have listed out noise impacts, pollution impacts, and we're committed to raise, surfacing all of the issues that are important to Millbrae residents. With respect to your comment, I just want to clarify, you're directing us to look at equity within Millbrae, but also how Millbrae is situated within the larger region?
Well, that would be my druther, but I don't think that that's in the parameters. That's up to the city manager on that. It just means that I'm going to have to look at our, we have an, we have a sort of environment commission. It started as a beautification committee, it's still evolving. It's not what would be considered a full climate change or climate resiliency commission in other cities. We don't have a really functioning bike pedestrian committee, which hurts us in our ability to grant fundraise. We don't have people with visual impairment, which makes a difference on how you walk down a street or cross a street on that. So, those are some of the gaps that I feel that we are missing in here. So, you know, it just, yes, I want to know how we can be more competitive with our neighbors in getting the dollars so that we can beef the money we can to provide services on that. That's my ultimate goal.
But Mayor, on that, I, I think this is exactly the plan to get us there, right? So, the findings from this plan can identify, then when we do go after grant funding or we do go out to the region, now we have a plan in place that we can identify what the shortcomings are, identify where the inequities are within Millbrae community, and say, hey, Supervisor Pine, look at this. Hey, state legislator, look at this. This will be a tool, a very important tool for us to compete.
Just for me, the lessons, no. The lessons learned from climate, from COVID were sleep and quiet, and we are not a quiet community. And that's something new that's going to be coming through the environmental community on noise. It would be impacted by people by living near freeways, obviously. That's where you will have picked it up on some of the projects that you've done. The other one that I bring up, just if you haven't checked it, NOAA has an amazing new website on heat island impacts, if you've looked at that. And I was surprised when I went in there to find out our entire east side is considered high-risk, but mainly because most of us don't have air conditioning. The problem then, too, is everybody assumes we're windy. Wind cools us off, but when those heat waves come and a heat dome comes, we have no wind. So, I just, that's my background. I want to make sure that you're diving into that. And I don't, I'm sorry, people of Millbrae, we don't have, we do, we have a couple of students who are in environmental science, where they've graduated, they've come in, and then they buy a house outside of Millbrae. We don't have a lot of people with that kind of background, so I just want to make sure you're asking the questions. Again, what the FAA is doing, just, we won't be on the record, because the FAA doesn't count it. It's low-frequency noise. I'm happy to provide you with the studies that we've gotten so far. The other thing that may not show, and a lot of residents may not know, three houses in Millbrae qualify for noise abatement from the airport. They're on Nandina. But many houses used to. The airport put in windows that have since led to a lot of mold and mildew and rotting of their framing. But I didn't know it until I moved back home in '06 and tore down a wall, and there were no frames left. So, I think we have a lot of people in Millbrae that don't know the problems that they have. And the last thing I would say, in your, your committee membership, you list kind of everybody who's still working, but you didn't list seniors on that. And it, it was on one of the slides about four slides ago. So, I think those are mine. Gina got Cappuccino High School. Yeah, that's, that's mine. So, again, I'm going to be hitting you heavy on environment and metrics, environmental metrics.
Please do.
I think it's the only way we're going to get any respect from the, I, I won't tell you how many people said, "Millbrae, you moved here when you knew it was noisy, so you should just live with it." And it makes, it hurts. It hurts to hear that, and people say it all the time, and it's wrong.
Yes.
In fact, we predate the airport. Thank you. I think we had a, who was next? Anders?
Councilmember Cahalan.
Cahalan, and then Councilman Fong.
I was just going to say, in terms of this helping us get grants, and I understand there are areas that we don't have data for, and that's an equity issue, but because this is setting some baseline metrics, I think when you apply for grants, they want those baselines, if you get the grant and you're doing that reporting, this really sets us up for success with those metrics, with those SMART goals for applying for grants and then reporting on them once we get them.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. Councilman Fong?
Thank you. I just want to kind of bring us back to the discussion that, within the subcommittee, obviously, Ms. Goodman and I serve in that subcommittee, and I think, I think there is a consensus at the time that we wanted to let the committee sort of tell us and drive the focus of what equity means to us as a city. That's why we're reaching out to these folks, and, you know, this needs to be, very much needs to be a community-driven effort, right? Let them, let these 15 people tell us what it means to be equitable to them, what it means for Millbrae to be more equitable, to be more inclusive, and how they need to be served. So, as it pertains to how we serve the people of Millbrae, because that's what this plan is about. And so, I just want to make sure that this, it's communicated effectively here. Also, looking at just slide number eight, it talks about language isolations, lack of civic engagement for undocumented immigrants and refugees. It's the staff report, sorry, not, not that slide, but it's the staff report. I saw page number eight on here. I just want to bring about, you know, in terms of relevance and context, Millbrae is about 23,000 people. Thirty-eight percent of our population were born outside of the country, first-generation immigrant, which means about 8,700 people. I'm fortunate enough to say that I'm one of them. So, to that end, I want to make sure that as we focus on how to serve the immigrant community, that we look at everyone within that immigrant community, not documented or otherwise, that I think it's, it's important for us to recognize. And obviously, the language piece is important as well. We are a community where we have a beautiful, diverse city, and, and many of our residents may not necessarily use English as their first language. So, that would be also one of the very important aspects, as we proceeded in our discussion, how to reach out to people, how to get them engaged, how to get them to speak about what it means for them to feel to be included, and their engagement. Sometimes, many times, over, language is a barrier. I can say that for a fact. So, but with that, I'll use the mic.
All right. Counsel, any more counsel opening it up for public comment? Opening for public comment? I have no written slips.
Mayor, there are no hands raised.
It looks like we have one member of the public that we can have him fill out a slip.
Mr. Hamani, please join us. Mr. Hamani, you need to be close to the mic, because the television is picking it up.
Yeah, first time I, I had the, whatever. I would never, I would never betray a sister, not like that, but listen to me, listen, listen very carefully. Whatever, you have said a lot of things, but basically, Millbrae needs money. You need, you need money. So, what if I have an alternative? Are you willing to accept money from Saudi Arabia? There's an offer on the table. But, yeah, that little prince is on a mission, so. And you accept Saudi Arabian money, and it will absolutely, will take care of all your... And you accept Saudi Arabian money and it will absolutely, will take care of all your Millbrae problems. So think about it. Just, you know, let it sink in and it's your conscience. I know, I, I know you're going to talk about human rights and all that stuff, but think about it. The rest is just blah, blah, blah.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on Zoom? Closing public comment, bringing it back to City Council, this is an action item. Move approval?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, somebody's mic.
I'm sorry, we have a motion by Councilwoman Pappan, seconded by Vice Mayor Goodman. Any further discussion? Seeing, okay.
I'm happy to vote for the motion, but under the assumption though, you address some of the things that we've been, obviously, we've been having a lot of discussion tonight and you will get a chance to review the notes and as you reviewed the tape tonight. But all the things that we discussed tonight, I'm assuming that you're going to take all of that into consideration as you finalize the plan.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that information will be included in our baseline community needs assessment. It will be co-developed by committee members as well as our data gathering process. We're in an extensive data gathering process. As I mentioned earlier, Calen Vial Screen is not, is just one of many, many data sources that we are using to learn about the city of Millbrae. And so, yes, we are happy to embrace all of the issues that you raised and raise up with the community.
And bring back to the subcommittee on a periodic basis for updates.
That's correct. We'll bring it back to you on a periodic basis. We'll also be talking with the staff equity committee on a periodic basis.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of the presentation as well?
I'm sorry.
Copy of the presentation? Copy of the presentation.
Okay.
Please, the slide deck today.
We'll print that out and.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Put it up on our website.
Very good. Okay, council, any other comments? Appreciate Councilman Fung. Yes, we do need to see the PowerPoint. It's very good. Thank you for all that I was hard on you. With that, let's call the question.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Kay Haley?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, I mean, sorry, number nine, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just in closing, I'd like to thank Mary Bill and her team and Colin, but I also like to recognize Eduardo Gonzalez, who is our assigned project manager. He's really worked closely with this team and will continue to do that. So just wanted to recognize Eduardo internally here for his good work as well.
Yes, he's an invaluable asset.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, staff. Okay, council, we've been going since five o'clock. It's 9:30. Would you mind if we take a four-minute break, which will be a little bit longer?
Mayor, just, I know there's a busy schedule, so I don't know if we'll be able to get through the agenda until we break for a closed session, but we do have several outside legal people that, that are scheduled for 10 o'clock closed session. So I'm just giving you a heads up that if we need to break in closed session and then come back, we can.
Okay.
Now, there are some items on the agenda in terms of agenda management. Item 13, for example, the grand jury report, we do have a presentation, but all of our responses are in the, in the staff report. You can, if you'd like to hear a staff report, we could do that or you can go ahead and just.
We can skip the staff report, but I have a comment because I know more.
And then the other two items are the city's web launch, city's website launch and presentation. You already did the appointment for Park and Recreation Commission, and then we have the study session on our parklet program.
Okay. If we had to table anything, is it better to table Agenda Item 10, the parklet? That's not time critical. I know it's great work, but.
We could continue that.
We, we could table 10 if possible. I just need to run, I will promise to be back quickly.
I guess I could let you run the meeting if you wanted to keep going. I just wanted to see the parklet presentation.
Okay. Which, that's, that is the next item. Which one, the parklet or are we tabling that one? We, we can continue item number 10 for two weeks. Okay. If there's a motion and a second to continue item number 10, maybe October 10th.
Actually, item number 10 requires, it has an impact on the business committee, but number 11, it's already done, is it not? It's just a presentation, isn't it?
Correct.
I mean, we can see it today, we can see it two weeks from now. It doesn't change the progress of the city mix.
No, we just wanted to share with the city council, we're ready to launch. And so if the council reviewed it tonight and has no, no, you know, critical issues with it, we're going to launch it tomorrow.
I think we can go there.
Okay. We could be, we could be brief. All right, so do we have a motion to table item number 10 for two weeks? Because I know we have closed session, so we're going to be here. So either we're here a little bit longer tonight and we just kind of power through. And then let's go ahead and just start with item 10 if there's no motion.
Sure. So on 26 minute, do you think we can do one, two, you know, two actions? How many, I mean, how many items do we want to tackle in 26 minutes?
I think we can get rid of the IT one quick and also the, what was the other one?
Item 13, the grand jury report is just.
Grand jury report. I think we can knock those out real quick.
All right, let's go ahead and try to do that then. Let's go to.
Shall we knock out a quick ones first?
Let's go ahead and do item number 13.
Wait, is that the bike report? No, I think the mayor wanted to make a comment. I don't want to get that rap.
So let's do.
Let's do the website.
Let's do the website. All right, item 11.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please. It was motion by.
Pappan.
Yes? Public comment? Anybody?
There's no hands raised for item number 11.
All right, city clerk, please.
All right. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Kay Haley?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
The IT.
The website.
I love it, yes.
Mayor Snyder?
One down.
Okay, item number 11, passed by a vote of five to zero.
I did have one comment, though, city clerk.
My comment on the website is for the committees and commissions, will they have their own information and are we getting them ready to get what they need for their pages on the website? You can answer me later.
Okay. I'll get back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we just did number 11. Thank you guys for moving forward, moving back. So we've done 12.
So we can.
Parklet?
We still have 10 and 13.
13 we have to do, don't we? We've got to get that response through. Can we do 13? Did everyone read 13?
Yes. Move approval.
Comment. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Because I serve on City County Association of Government Bike Pedestrian Committee, what I feel lacking in this report is finances. They kind of throw us all in the same boat without equity in funding. And if the letter's going to go out, it's not mentioned. I read through the whole thing trying to see if they ever picked up on any of that, and it looks like they didn't. This had been reported out by CCG's executive director at our BPAC meeting two months ago. So I knew that they kind of colored this report. But is it possible and would the city, would the council accept it if the letter says that the city of Millbrae has grave concerns on the equitable and geographical distribution of all bike and pedestrian funds? And that that is really why we're not working together city by city? What happens is we have a countywide bike pedestrian plan, and then people apply for grants, and then grants are awarded to projects that have nothing to do with north, south, east, west connectivity. And that's completely missing in the analysis by the grand jury. So I found it was kind of a, it hit some important things, but it missed a hell of, heck of a lot on there. So you give me permission to kind of just modify the letter saying, we wish the city, the grand jury looked at XYZ?
Can I ask a question? Because I'm new to responding to grand jury reports. Is that issue part of the grand jury report? And if no, is it standard to just reply to the grand jury report? Or is it common to add additional comments? Is there, is there any protocol around that?
No, you can, you can add additional comments that the city feels the grand jury may have missed.
I'm fine with that addition.
If you're all fine with that, I'll work through the language over the next couple of days. And it's really, they missed some criteria to review on that. So I thank you with that. With that, I'm happy to support the motion. Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, opening it up to the public comments on the grand jury's report on countywide bike pedestrian activities.
There are no public comments online, Mayor.
Thank you. Bringing it back to council, we have a motion by Councilwoman Pappan, seconded by Councilman Fung. Right, did I get that right? Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Okay. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes, with the addition the mayor stated.
Thank you. Councilmember Kay Haley?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The motion to approve the grand jury response with amendments with, what, to include the mayor's comments to the grand jury report, passed by five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10.
Yes, Mayor, this is a study session of provide the city council with kind of an introduction of where we are with the parklet program. Have a few questions for you. And then, you know, just, just to provide input as we proceed or not proceed with an ordinance to bring back to the council if the council agrees that the parklet program is worth pursuing. So with that, I would like to introduce Jennifer Lim, our assistant planner for a staff presentation.
And welcome, Ms. Lim, for your first council report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schneider and members of the city council. I'm Jennifer Lim, assistant planner with the city of Millbrae. And tonight I will be providing an update on the parklet program guidelines. Next slide. The urgency ordinance was adopted, number 778, resolution number 2037, enabling restaurants to operate outdoor dining facilities during the COVID-19 state of emergency. A temporary parklet program was adopted by city council on June 23rd, 2020, allowing restaurants to use parking spaces for outdoor dining. Prior to this, a pilot parklet program was established in 2017. The COVID-19 state of emergency ended on February 28th, 2023, which also ended the urgency ordinance enabling the temporary parklet program. Staff brought this item to the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee on January 26th and June 8th, 2023. The evac members were supportive of continuing the parklet program but expressed concerns about the impact on parking availability. Next slide, please. On Ju, on July 17th, 2023, the draft parklet program guidelines were presented to the planning commission. Planning commissioners were supportive of continuing the parklet program. However, tonight, we want to get council's input and see if you're supportive or not supportive of continuing the parklet program. The commissioners also express that they would prefer reasonable costs for the permit fee as they do not want to discourage businesses from applying. They also want to maintain parklets for cleanliness and safety. The city of Millbrae hosted an outreach meeting for businesses and the public on September 13th, 2023. Business owners expressed concerns with the lack of parking affecting their businesses. Parklets not being used should be removed and parklets are not necessary on every block. Next slide, please. So a parklet is a use of space in the dedicated right-of-way for uses such as seating and outdoor dining. Parklets really help bring people downtown, create, or help bring people outdoors, creating a livelier downtown. And this has been especially helpful for restaurants, especially during the pandemic. All parklet installations will require a parklet encroachment permit. Next slide, please. So Millbrae currently has five parklets in the downtown, occupying about 15 spaces. Of these five parklets, four were permitted during the pandemic. And a total of 12 parklets have been permitted throughout the city beginning in 2017. Photos of all of the existing parklets can be found in attachment two of the staff report. Next slide. So this is a map showing where the five existing parklets are. On the top left is Nine Noodle House on Hillcrest. And then going clockwise is La Colina Restaurant, Fiddler's Green on the El Camino Real Frontage Road, and Wonderful and Sugan Indian Restaurant and Bar on Broadway. Next slide. So parklets are allowed in the downtown mixed-use areas, and this includes the El Camino Real Frontage Road. Parklets should be installed adjacent to their storefront. If they encroach onto a neighboring storefront, they would need approval first. The maximum number of parking stalls allowed is two parallel spaces or up to four perpendicular or angled spaces. For the parklet setbacks, a traveling setback must be maintained, and that's a minimum of one foot. And a side setback, minimum of two feet, must be maintained to the nearest space. If a parklet is being proposed on a corner, then it would, must meet a 25-foot setback from the nearest crosswalk. Next slide. So parklets must be designed of high-quality, durable and attractive materials as they are part of the streetscape. The platform itself must be ADA accessible and required to meet California building code and fire code. The platform must also allow for maintenance, access and stormwater drainage, and this would be reviewed by our public works, building and fire departments. Railings or enclosures serve as a safety element, and they should have a reflective element as well. And that maximum height for railings and enclosures is three feet. If a wind barrier is being proposed on top of the railing, that maximum is also three feet. For traffic safety protections, wheel stops help protect against moving traffic and create a buffer for parallel parking spaces. And poster volleys create a vertical element which help make parklets more visible to traffic. Next slide. So all furnishings and fixtures must be weighted down or stored inside for wind protection. Some examples of these furnishings and fixtures include portable heaters, umbrellas and tents, and these must be made of fire-resistant material. Next slide. So this is an example of a parklet that incorporates some of the design elements such as the wheel stop, the protective railing and access for stormwater drainage next to the curb. Next slide. So these are a few examples of some of the materials that would be acceptable for the city. And then next slide has a few examples of materials that wouldn't be acceptable. Next slide. So for permit requirements, a parklet encroachment permit and an annual permit fee is required for all parklet installations. Parklet permits can be renewed annually, beginning on January 1st, which is typically the slow period for parklets. And this permit fee is still being evaluated in conjunction with the city's parking study. An applicant must submit their plans in a material board for Stafford to review. And permittees must identify the city and provide insurance. For the permit process, applicants will apply and city departments will review for compliance. Parklets must be maintained for cleanliness and safety and accessibility. Failure to do so may result in loss of eligibility for renewal or citation. If for any reason a parklet is being removed, they must first notify the city. Next slide. So staff recommends the city council review and provide input on the draft parklet program guidelines. And tonight, we want to receive council's input on a discussion item, should we have the parklets or not? And if so, direct staff to prepare an ordinance for city council adoption. The staff is available for any comments or questions.
Thank you. Fantastic presentation, Ms. Lim.
Counsel.
Ms. Pappan?
Thank you, Ms. Lim. Yes, you get to come back up. Who wants to come back up?
We'll be harder on you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I like the idea of some parklets, but don't want to be overrun by parklets, for sure. Certain things here are, are there encroachment permits right now? We do have those. Okay, good. Yeah, I'm deeply concerned that.
Uh, yeah, I'm deeply concerned that we set a price for these parklets because that's, the streets are city property, and they should not be given away for free here. The businesses really get an advantage, and limiting the number of parking spaces is always impacting not one, but all the businesses. So I'm concerned that we keep the limits as they are at this point. How you come about with the price of these parklets or the annual fee for the parklets is important. I'm not sure how you come about that, but that's a good thing. Want to make sure to, no advertising on the parklets or political ads of any kind, no alternative uses either. I understand some have been used for other purposes or rented out, subleased. Want to make sure that does not happen. And did you include lighting, like nighttime lighting? Was that in the presentation? I'm sorry, it's a little late. I might have missed it.
Not in the presentation.
Okay, well, that, I mean, that would really be an addition, I think, to the downtown, something that would benefit. And I was interested too in the traffic safety aspects of it, how you light it or how it set off some of the hits these. So I look upon this as a positive. If it is a financial benefit, well, I mean, not necessarily, benefit to the community and to the city. I think those are the aspects we need to look at moving forward. So again, if we can get more information on the lights and what the cost to the city is for those parking spaces, 24 hours, seven days a week, all of that, because they're taken out of the circulation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. Given that we've got 10 minutes before our attorneys on the hour will be coming up, if our motion tonight is to go ahead with an ordinance, can we think about moving in that direction in the next eight minutes? Councilwoman Cahalan, Councilman Fong?
Thank you very much for all the work on this. I just had two questions. One is, do we know if the five existing parklets meet all of these standards currently? Or if these are put into an ordinance, if they would have to do work to reach that? And then my other question is, was there discussion about limiting the number, the total number of parklets?
The five would most likely meet the guidelines that we have drafted. Their, the discussion of whether or not we'd like to limit them is certainly valid. If the council feels that it should be limited to one per block, or if there's a spacing, that's, that's certainly an item for consideration. We'd love to hear your thoughts.
Can I follow up on that? So having walked this just recently, the, I missed my place, the lighting is on page 11 of the staff report. The, the frontage road, which has minimal parking, 355 and 333, Fiddler's Green and La Colina, they're right next to each other. And I hear complaints from the others, the other retails that you can't see them. So I liked, I like the draw, the, the one with the lower walls on that. I understand that we're windy. And my question for that is, should we have two right there? Is there a way they might share space and open up that parking for the other retail outlets that have come and spoken to me? Several of them have pulled me in, I've gone and walked it. The other thing that's unique in that one block is really wide sidewalks. So maybe the sidewalk can be part of this ordinance too. What I would like to see along with all of Councilwoman Papen's list is that we bring the height down. But I do like that one drawing that you found that had the glass roof on top. We just, we have wind, so maybe they're temporary wind blocks, but the plastic tends to look really cheap really quick on that. And then the, I'm going to mispronounce, the Indian restaurant, 333 Broadway, is in front of two different existing stores. So if we do pass the ordinance, I would think they're going to have to shrink. And they should shrink on that. And, and I appreciate Wonderful painting their plywood, but hopefully we are upgrading the materials on that.
Yes.
With that, I agree.
Exposed plywood would not be permitted.
Okay, I do love the wrought iron. When I, I like all of these examples, you know, something that we can all be proud of, more plantings in there, just how we control the wind. And I would support an ordinance going forward on this, in which case we'd all have a little bit more time. Maybe you meet with us for our one-on-one, what we'd like to see with the ordinances, if you're open to that.
Absolutely, we could meet with a committee if, or one-on-ones.
Okay.
Yes.
Or at least with those of us who have very specific things they want to make sure in the ordinance. Councilman Fong?
I believe well-maintained and actively used parklets would add to a more vibrant downtown business community. So we want to have policy that keeps our business community strong. And it's a strong business community would be beneficial to all of us. So, but I want to emphasize, it needs to be well-maintained and actively used. Now, in terms of policies, all the parklets should only be used for the purpose of outdoor dining only, for the purpose of the business that sponsors it. It should be free of, you know, any and all political messages because it is in the public right-of-way. Public owns that piece of property, so it cannot have any other political messages. It should also be free of any other marketing materials unrelated to the business who sponsor that parklet as a matter of policies. You don't want this to become sort of a mantra of all kinds of messaging.
We'll include that in the ordinance.
Right, so, so just from that standpoint, I'd be happy to support that ordinance or the action tonight. Now, I also had a chance to participate in the community meeting right here in this council chamber with the business community, with you, Community Development Director. And thanks for organizing that. And many of the participant from the business community have expressed some concern over activities in public parking lots. Could you efficiently speak to some of that?
Oh, yeah, one of the, one of the comments that came out of that, for example, was related to the farmer's market. They felt that it should be moved down a block. That was one comment we received. There was a concern about the fact that parklets are being used to, for parking spaces that other businesses would, were to have. That was certainly a comment provided. And, and the other comment that was notable was that the business owners all agreed in paying their fair share for the use of the parklet when it comes to a fee. They missed.
Yeah, I think that's.
Did they get them all?
The gist of it. So I mean, you know, as obviously, you know, we have a tight timeline here tonight. And, and another item that you mentioned a moment ago is the farmer's market and how some of the business owners were having some concerns over the locations and how it was managed and all of that. So, but I would advise if the city manager can bring this item back as a future discussion on how the farmer's market can be improved and, and more strategically located in the future agenda item. I would appreciate that.
Okay, opening it up for public comment. City clerk, I have no slips. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Mayor, there are no hands raised online.
Okay, open public comment, closing public comment, bringing it back to council.
Motion to have staff pursue an ordinance in the future with many of the comments the council has given.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. Thank you, Vice Mayor Goodman. Any further discussion? First of all, I want to say thank you. I enjoyed the staff report. I enjoyed the presentation. I really liked the nice examples on that. With that, please call the question.
Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The council directed staff to prepare a parklet program ordinance for adoption. A motion passed by five to zero.
So please don't take our short timing it as, as any reflection on a great job. Thank you on that. Okay, we are at the end of our regular business. We have to meet with the city, with the attorneys in closed session. I really did want us to have council comments. So what I'm going to tell council, council comments historically are for us to report out when we have been on city business or at regional committees. I don't think we're going to come back after the meeting because it'll be after 11:00. But let's make sure there's enough time at our October meeting to report out. I know we were, all of us doing.
We did one minute. Probably do one minute.
Well, we're at 9:57, city manager. We've got to move to the city.
I'll take 30 seconds.
Yeah.
Okay, 30 seconds.
If you want to go one minute apiece, Mayor, I mean, we.
I hate to do 30 seconds, but Mayor Oliva did it. Vice, uh, Fong, go ahead.
All right, so had a discussion, you know, many members of the community has reached out recently regarding the MOU with the county. So I just wanted to say that this will come before this council in a discussion on, is it October 10th, city manager?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and we want to make sure that this is a public process and as much community input as we can receive it, it is important that our public is involved in this very important process here. So I also went to Cal Cities and saw traffic calming measure and some of the vendors. I think, given what some of the comment that we've been listening over and over again, Mr. Raquel is still in the audience tonight, thanks for being here. So speed radar and detectors, that sort of thing, could really be helpful in ensuring better pedestrian safety. We've committed some of that funding last council meeting, I think 200,000 and change. And I think more can be done to keep our community and our pedestrians safe. So with that said, you know, between Helen Drive, Millbrae Avenue, El Camino Real, and various hotspot, we can look into some of those traffic calming measure and perhaps radar, speed detectors to let people know how fast they're driving. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan.
Just a couple quick items. My first League of California Cities conference was fantastic. I'll share some highlights at next council meeting report out. The Park and Rec Commission, at the last meeting, we had the opportunity to view the proposed playground equipment at the Bayside Manor and Marina Vista Parks. And that'll be coming to council in October. So I really encourage the public to come out and attend those meetings and see what's being proposed and provide feedback. It's pretty exciting. And I'll leave other items for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Cal Cities was great, had a great time. I was, I swore, I was sworn in as the exec, a member of the executive committee for.
Peninsula.
Peninsula Division of Cal Cities.
Congratulations. Councilwoman Papen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a kind of study session up at Green Hill School, traffic safety issues with the city manager, the sheriff's department, and our engineers due to questions about safety there. Cal Cities was great. I shared with the city manager the conversation, courageous conversations, conflict and conversations. Also received material on the ultimate flood protection solution, statewide travel program where we can save some funding for our local travel. Also rental scape, I don't know if we're using them. As far as our ADUs are concerned, our short-term rentals, they follow 10,000 websites. I suggest we look into that. Also documentation on storage, documentation for all of our incoming documents here, design, earthscapes, and also some commercial Christmas decoration experts, which we might want to pursue in the future.
They had a fun booth.
Yeah, so it, all very interesting things. So that's where many of us were, at the Council of Cities, and a lot of great information was shared. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Really quickly, at Cal Cities, talking to the booth for our recycled water project, the city of Santa Monica won an environmental award for their combined stormwater and sewage treatment. But they got their funding through the state loan program. They said it was much easier than the federal loan program, much less paperwork. So I have this for Andrea. I have some other gifts for staff on there. The, I, I will be bringing forward a request to think about how we are running our bike pedestrian committee. You know, we do have the new rule that council members can ask, and the mayor has 60 days to assign it out on that, on that. And I had one other critical, but it is going through my mind. I think I got them in during other comments, other meetings that I've attended that are just sort of heartbreaking on that. So with that, we will close city council meeting. There are some people to close in memory, but I will bring them in Oc, in October, so we have fair time on that. So with that, I thank you. I congratulate our new park and rec commissioners. You need to go to the city clerk and get sworn in on that, and we will see you on October 10th. Oh, shoot, Sheriff Activity League this Thursday. We have tables. Come, Gina, you, me, city manager, we've got baskets to turn in. I'm still working on mine. Thank you.